You have the floor.
Where we left off was the withdrawal of my amendment for it to come to the legislature. So, and then there was no objections, right?
Correct.
And I was going to then proffer an amendment. And I know you like things to be moved a little bit faster, but I'm sorry to say, but this is something that should not move fast. I'm realizing that in reading, of course, the particular section, Section 4, I am now more confused. And I'll just kind of walk everybody along, and like I said, I'm appealing to our colleagues who may know more than I do to kind of help me along. In Page 3, starting with that Section 4, where we are saying that the right of reversal, of course, that's in the grant deed as approved by Public Law 31-195, shall be triggered only by the failure of the developer to build homes within the nine-year period commencing upon the date of enactment of Public Law 31-282. So I had to go and find those laws, so I'll be able to read what those laws are saying, and then to actually determine then what the time period is where the deed then will, you know, when it goes into effect, and then when would the reversionary clause kick in. And although it says here in a nine-year period, and I was looking at the deed itself, and it's -- I have to pull it. Then looking at the deed, I couldn't reading the deed further, then it gives another date rather than nine years to six years. So then, now the next question would be, which of these two laws are we really talking about? Then, when we pulled out Public Law 31-282, only to find out again that there is another section on the covenant to build affordable homes, that it refers to another bill, 30-172, which is Exhibit G, and that's where it says nine years. So the other question then is to try to find out which date is correct. Then I thought about looking maybe at when it was stamped and filed with land management, thinking that that may be the correct date to trigger the nine years. But even that date does not coincide with these two laws. So I honestly don't know. And I'm sharing this because I'm very frustrated, because I can't think logically to read this and actually even support this amendment because of some issues that are just not clear to me. Then, the other thing on the next page, of course, and oddly enough, of course, with the language was given to the legislature, this particular language from the company rather than from legal counsel, discussing with our legal counsel exactly what it is that we're addressing, that could they inadvertently remove the "shall" to "may," which we were able to return back again, because everywhere in the deed it talks about "shall," so we restored that. Then, the sentence after that on Page 4, on Lines 2 to 4, then it says, "All other special conditions contemplated shall remain enforceable by judicial remedy." And, you know, what are those special conditions? So as I read then the deed, trying to find out what those special conditions are, which I thought at first, when I had, before we took a break, was livestock, you know, and other animals in the residential area, because that was, I guess, if I went back to find out what it is really, but it's not just that, because there is in the deed also then, which is Section 5. And then the deed now actually does not only talk about then what we call, what I had mentioned earlier about what those restrictions could be. So I'm trying to make the assumption that special conditions are the same in Page 4 of the deed, where it talks about future deeds to contain restrictions. And there are five. There's the no noxious, illegal, or offensive use of property, I'm just abbreviating some of these because it's longer, no trash, garbage, ashes, or other refuse junk and vehicles; two, then three, no animals, livestock, or poultry shall be raised and to be bred on the property; all lines or wires for telephone, power, television otherwise placed underground; and then five, no outside toilet facilities to be constructed. So I'm thinking now then is that could these special conditions be these five, these five restrictions in the deed? And then, so, and I know initially when I said that I had wanted to then be very specific in terms of what it is that the Board of Directors will do, because then we go to Line 5 to 7, this is like a blank check that we're, so to speak, giving authorization to the Board of Directors to go in, grant them the full authority to execute any necessary changes. And so we're saying, well, maybe it's just consistent only with this, but then I don't know what it is. So are those special conditions, those five restrictions? But I can't, you know, I don't want to make any assumptions. And that, of course, really to me is problematic. Literally, it scares me. It scares me because we're now then allowing full authority, blanket authority, for individuals to go in there and change the deed. And the deed at the very beginning, which was, which took some time, through years, yes, and court, you know, order, and all that to finally get us to where we're at. But then now to just wash your hands and say, go ahead then and make any changes, because you can just tie it consistent with this section. Consistent with this section really is everything that's in the deed. It's everything that's in this entire document, which I've not even read, you know, in such a short time, because I don't have the time to be able to do this because of session. So I can't find out what those are. So that means anything in here then can be changed that'll be consistent to what it is that they need to make sure that they get a clear mortgage. And I don't know what that is. Could it be as to who will sign the deed? Could it be that maybe a procurement process? Could it be another form of financing? Because now we're talking about tax credit. I don't know. But they're all definitely related to this particular section. It's not just specific to what I'm talking about, because I really don't know. And, you know, I have an amendment that I like to proffer, but after I've already asked to put this together, I'm leery. And I know that it is my responsibility as a member of this legislature, when we pass legislation, that we know what we're doing, and that we're doing the best that we can, of course, for, you know, the people of Guam. And I don't want to say I want to wash my hands of this entirely, because either way, it's still going to come back to me, even if I'm going to be the sole person maybe that do not support this. It's still going to come back to me, because I'm a member of this legislature. So I really don't feel comfortable. I don't have enough information. I don't know what these special conditions are. I don't know what it is that they're going to be wanting to, you know, to execute, to change. I don't know. Mr. Speaker and my colleagues, I ask you is to help me out, to figure this out, because I really can't. And even the amendment that I wanted to proffer was to say, okay, we'll keep the provisions of the grant, the deed, the grant deed of provisions 3 and 4, which talks about the reversionary clause, to say, to make it very clear that the reversionary clause will be there, the reversion on breach by notice, with notice by grantor, which actually we wouldn't touch, that says that we put back the "shall." That, you know, I was thinking that maybe if I did that, that then I can feel good about. Then the other, the other part of the grant deed is the reversion on breach again, Part 2, which is the effect on mortgage, leaving that again untouched, because we don't, we surely don't want to deal with that. But then I come down to the next one after it, is the future deeds to contain restrictions. And there are five of those. But after this is done, then I asked myself this other question, is that it is just too simple. And maybe some, I know simple sometimes is good. But when you look at the language in the deed on the reversion of breach with notice by the grantor, and then reversion on breach effect on mortgage, and you compare, the language was very specific to what it is that would allow for a breach and the notice would be by the grantor, and then what the notice of breach would be, of course, if, you know, they default it. And then I look at the language here, and it's nowhere, nowhere near what is being said here. And I don't know whether the, this amendment is going to go in now and change even further, because this is what they want now, the authority to go in and change, that it would change some of the reversionary clause. It could actually change the entire deed. That's the bottom line. So, Mr. Speaker, I ask, you know, of course, in this case, for, you know, your guidance. I look to our colleagues as well, you know, to look at this and ask more questions, and I will listen intently, I, you know, and work with everybody to make this work, because I don't want it, again, and I agree with the author, is that I don't want this to take so many years, because I know, you know, we worked on this. You know, I was her co-sponsor to be able to do this, but this is something a little bit different now. This is, you know, what's in place is there. I just can't help but wonder, when you asked that question too, you know, is that whether, you know, should we get the legal counsels to talk to our legal counsel? Should we even have a public hearing this, so we can get all the details? What really bothers me is that how do we even get to 48%? All this time, that they knew somehow that this could have been a problem, to wait until we are at 48% completion, and that 49th now can halt, you know, what they need to do. And, you know, I'm offering, Mr. Speaker, that, you know, several things. Yeah, a committee of the whole, but of course that would take too long. We won't be able to get all the other bills to be heard. We can do a public hearing, and I can hold hearing, I mean, a call session immediately the next day, you know, if we need to, because yes, we understand that this is important. But I think it's only fair that every single member in this body know exactly what it is that we're going to amend in this deed that we pass by law, and not to just wash our hands now and say, I'm going to give it now to somebody else to do when this was law. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Did all the members get a copy of the Gura letter that was just distributed? Has everybody had a chance to review it? The two years on the LITC would have expired sometime this year. They'd been given an additional year to December 21st, 31st, 2016. With the most current information that we've received, does any member wish to speak? Madam Speaker, do you want to take the?
On the motion, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, last evening, I asked for only one thing. I asked for legal counsel to meet with legal counsel of Guam Housing Corporation to resolve and to advise us on what the issues are. I've been informed that they've not been able to get together, and we are being pushed to move this through. I cannot in good conscience support such a move. I hate to do it, but it cannot. And with the letter that we just got from Gura, I thought the LITC was going to expire this year, which it should have. A two-year from 2013 would have made it expiring this year. But as is stated in the letter, for extenuating circumstances, it's been extended to December 31st, 2016. We have an additional 16, 17 months to be able to meet the deadline of LITC. I don't believe that it's necessary to move with this today. I'd ask that this bill be referred back to committee.
There is a motion to send the bill back to committee, and there is an objection. Is there anyone who would like to speak, or you want me to call for the vote? Okay, so I'm going to call for the vote. So all in favor then of sending Bill Number 15-33 back to committee, please raise your hand. Call of the House. Okay, brief recess. There is a request for a call of the House, and Senator had said that there should be three calls for the House, but that's for roll call, so. Where did he go? So there is a motion, then, a request to call of the House, so then. There is a motion to refer Bill 15-33 back to the committee, and there is an objection. So I'm going to call for the vote. So all in favor then to send Bill 15-33 back to committee, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. The motion fails. Does anyone would like to speak on the motion? None, so therefore, I'm going to call on the author then to close. Oh, Senator Esposito, I'm sorry. Okay, Senator Esposito. Mary, I have your name here, I saw your name. Senator, were you on the list to speak?
I still have my name listed.
Okay, all right. Okay, Senator Esposito.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and colleagues. You know, Madam Speaker, I've listened to the concerns that you've raised, that other members have raised, but I also listened to the presentation made by the mover of the substitute bill. And in my own understanding, I think what was made very clear and simple is now put us in a situation where it becomes confusing, because the intent and the mechanism of this section, which is the genesis of the substitute bill, has really been stretched to be beyond what the amendment will actually provide. You know, we understand, Madam Speaker, and we're receiving the guidance of the Guam Housing Corporation, where this legislature, by prior action of prior legislatures and prior governors, made a statutory commitment that the title will be clean and marketable, and that, given the provisions of the federal tax credit program, that you have to have 50% financing. And so we've also known that this title company has been going back and forth. This thing has been going on for a year, but more specifically, over the last three months, there's been a lot of disagreement of Guam Housing's interpretation, the title company's interpretation is very different from the underwriter's interpretation, which has caused a pause in the ability for this project to seek the financing that it needs in order to be qualified for the federal tax credit program that we have before us. And so, Madam Speaker, our role here is to provide a legislative affirmation that when the legislature adopted the, all these covenances, when they adopted the grant deed with continuing conditions and restrictions, the special covenants, all we're saying is that the only way that this property will be reverted back to the government or with the reversionary clause is if the developer doesn't build the homes within the nine-year period commencing upon the date of enactment of Public Law 31-282. And then, a previous speaker pointed out some confusion with respect to when that, when is the, when is the commence, when is the nine-year period start, when does the nine-year period end? And of course, the information that originally was six years is factual, but what is also factual is that that six years was amended to nine years. So this amendment is not giving additional time to the developer, or to Guam Housing, or to anyone. This amendment is not giving any additional time for this project to be completed. I submit that what this amendment would do would prevent the further delay of this project from moving forward. And so because the project is at 48.5%, which means that they cannot go a single step further, everything is at a standstill. So if we're going to say we have 16, 17 months for this LITC tax credits to expire, the issue is, what do we do over the next few months when this thing is still at a standstill, and the underwriter is concerned that if the reversionary clause is tied to noxious noise, livestock on the property, then certainly there's a problem. And the example I used earlier is that if we're a landlord and our tenant does not comply with the special covenants requirements, does that mean that as a landlord, we should forfeit our property to the bank? No, it just means that that tenant shall be evicted, and that eviction can be done through judicial remedy. There's always some, there's also some concern raised that why provide a sentence regarding "all other special conditions contemplated shall remain enforceable by judicial remedy, but not, shall not be grounds for reversion of the property to Guam Housing Corporation." So this sentence simply means that this legislature is recognizing those special conditions, those ordinances and those covenants, so that we don't provide for a slum neighborhood. So the restriction is clearly here, and that restriction is not being waived. And so what really is a desire on some members' part to call for a public hearing, to ask, you know, feedback, whether or not this language will work? I mean, we got confirmation that the underwriter is amenable to the proposal that Senator Barnes is putting forward in the substitute bill. I mean, is that the goal here? And I think it is. The goal is to legislatively affirm that the reversionary clause is only tied to the nine-year requirement to build homes pursuant to that contract. And so, Madam Speaker, when there's other questions that are being raised, you know, with the question of what is contained in the special covenants deed, what is contained in the grant deed with continuing conditions, clearly Senator Barnes could have put all these documents forward, and I think a past legislature, by adopting these deeds word for word, really would mean that we have to go back and legislatively make any clarifications or affirmations that it was, that it doesn't make sense that the property can be reverted back to the government if a tenant who's renting is not complying with the special covenants provision. And so, so the section starts out that notwithstanding any provision of law, the right of reversion contained in the grant deed with continuing conditions and restrictions approved by Public Law 31-195 shall be triggered only by the failure by the developer to build homes within the nine-year period commencing upon the date of enactment of Public Law 31-282. This is the public law that changed it from six years to nine years, not this amendment. This amendment did not change it from six years to nine years. This public law did. And so this is saying that all this grant deed with continuing conditions and restrictions, simply that the only way that this developer will forfeit the property to Guam Housing is if they don't fulfill the terms of the contract. And then it goes on to say, if the current owner or its successor fails to complete construction prior to the expiration of such period, title of the property that remains unconstructed shall revert to the Guam Housing Corporation, which is consistent with past legislative action and statutory requirements. All other special conditions contemplated shall remain enforceable by judicial remedy. I mean, if this section is taken out, then there's no guarantee, there's no way to prevent that area from being a slum neighborhood if we don't recognize those special conditions. These, this sentence here keeps those special conditions intact. And the last section, which was also brought up, basically gives Guam Housing Corporation through the board the authority to execute any deed necessary to effectuate the intent of this provision, provided however, that action remains consistent with this section. And so there's that very, there's that restriction, that all their actions have to be consistent with this section. And this section is basically, Madam Speaker, saying that the grant deed with continuing conditions and restrictions approved by statute can only, the property can only be returned to the develop, to the Guam Housing Corporation if the developer fails to build those homes. And so, so I thank you again for the opportunity to speak on the amendment, and a lot of the issues that were raised are really outside of the, in my opinion, outside of the scope of what this amendment really would do. So I thank you for the opportunity.
You're welcome. On the motion, is there anyone who would like to speak? There being none. So Senator Munia Barnes, would you like to close? On the motion then to send 15-33 to the third reading file, no objection, is ordered. Senator Rodriguez, I saw him. Senator Rodriguez, can someone find him? His bill is up. So not here, then we're going to move on now to the second tier. Senator Rodriguez on Bill 48-33? Oh, you're, okay, well, yesterday, okay, so, all right. So on Bill 9-33 then.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon. I'd like to place Bill 9 as amended by the Committee on Finance and Taxation on the third reading and be allowed to briefly speak on the bill.
Is it as introduced?
As amended.
Okay, wait, let me find that. As amended by the committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you may proceed.
Thank you very much. Madam Speaker, Bill 9, what this bill sets out to do is adopt the rules and regulations relative to the responsible alcohol serving, selling, training programs. What we've done in the last term, Madam Speaker, was pass legislation that now requires people who sell or serve alcohol in off and on-premise establishments go through who sell or serve alcohol in off and, off and on-premise establishments, go through a classroom alcohol server selling training program. And we've done that with the support of all 15 senators out of 32nd Guam Legislature, signed into law by the Governor of Guam. And what it, you know, what it had, Madam Speaker, was a framework for now the board to be able to promulgate its rules and regulations so that this, this law can move forward. What this, just to briefly speak about what this, what this law does, Madam Speaker, is that it really puts the, our effort to combat the abuse of alcohol in our community on the front end. We, we've done a lot, a lot of our colleagues here, and even in the past, have done a lot to try to curb the abuse of alcohol in the community, the drunk, drunk driving. We've even increased the, the age of alcohol purchase and consumption to 21. I mean, so a lot of the work has been done on the back end. What this, what this alcohol server selling law has done, Madam Speaker, is really give the tools to the people who are on the front end, the people who are the front lines, who serve the alcohol, who sell it in the stores, and, you know, to ensure that they have the, the knowledge of our alcohol laws on Guam, so that we can, you know, we can deter the abuses on, on the front end. And so, what this, what this law, what this bill does, Madam Speaker, is now adopt these rules and regulations. And then, of course, through the administrative process, the board may again, if they so choose, amend these rules and regulations. But I felt that it was important to move forward with this because it's taken, it's taken a very long time, even after the time that we prescribed an initial law to give them the, the amount of flexibility to put something together. And it hasn't been done. We understand the board is a very busy board, one of the very, you know, one of the busiest boards. And so, what we'd like to do with this, Madam Speaker, is just move this initiative forward by adopting the rules and regs that we have here in this, in Bill 9. Madam Speaker, one, you know, one of, in addition to what I've just spoke about, for a very long time, we know that the enforcement of the ABC law has really been a challenge for our ABC department, our ABC bureau over at the Rev and Tax. What this law does, once the, the program is actually implemented, is provide the resources to, to ABC to be able, you know, for them to enforce the ABC laws of Guam. And so, we, we also want to make sure that we get this, you know, we get this moving. I want to thank the chairman of the committee who had heard this, heard this bill, had a public hearing, and also had a follow-up roundtable with stakeholders. And really, at that roundtable discussion, you know, there was consensus, you know, there were some concerns raised, and I believe the chairman had, the committee had incorporated some of those in this amended version. And so now, Madam Speaker, I'd just like to be able to proffer a few amendments. One of them, which should have, should, everyone should have a copy of now. On page three, after line five, Madam Speaker, I'd like to include what I have here on the amendment. And what this is here, Madam Speaker, this is the existing language in the current law, in public law 32-51. And the only thing where we're including here on the bottom of this sheet, Madam Speaker, is to ensure that the, that the funds that are being, are paid for to obtain an alcohol server seller license, 50% of that goes back into the, the ABC compliance fees and fines fund that have been set up already by previous, a previous law. You know, it was, it was, it was referenced when we first passed this law in the last term, that $60 now would, would be the cost for an employee to obtain an alcohol server license, which would be good for three years. And so, in discussions with potential, potential organizations that would carry out these programs, Madam Speaker, it's, you know, there's a consensus that, you know, at, at the very maximum, $30 is what it should cost these programs to be able to, to, to conduct these classroom trainings. And so, you know, we would like to just ensure that with this, with this language incorporated here, ensure that it does not go over that. If it, if it does, if, if for some reason, you know, there is a desire to increase, increase the fee, then they have to go through, through the administrative adjudication law to make that happen. But we want to make sure that 50% of what is paid, of that $60, goes back into the ABC fund. And so, this is what this, this amendment does.
On the amendment, I said two, two, well, really, one primarily, on page three of the bill, and it would be after line five, so be, include this section that exists in the law, but an amendment to the law just for the, the fines and fees to, that 50% of that will be used to obtain a, that will go towards the tuition for the server. So, on the amendment, is there anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? None? No objection, so ordered. Senators do have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Now, Madam Speaker, on exhibit A of this, of Bill 9, is the existing rules and regulations, the Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations for the Alcohol Beverage Control Board. And so, the underlying sections here are the only ones that we have included, which are all referenced in the original law, public law 32-51. And so, you'll see it throughout the rules and regs, what has been added. And I, there's, there's one section here, page 16, Madam Speaker. If you can turn to page 16, I'd like to make an amendment. I know that the committee had, on line seven and line 11, had a strike through on the alcohol server selling training program. And I, I believe, I can speak a little bit why I think the committee, I don't, I didn't get a chance to speak to the chairman beforehand, but I can, I can assume, one of the reasons is that during the discussions and the roundtable hearings we've had, some organizations feel that in the delegation of authority that we have included in the initial law, it's not mandatory. It was an option, as a tool that we're providing ABC Board to be able to, you know, let's say they work with GCC, Madam Speaker, who right now already does, you know, who conducts trainings for the health certificates and some other licenses that are required. In, in the law, we've, we've gave, we provide a delegation of authority so that once the employee obtains the, the training, the classroom training that's required, at that point in time, the GCC could then provide them the actual alcohol server selling card at that point, which now would be the, the license to be able to serve and to sell. And so, I know the concern was that, well, they're not a regulatory agency, they shouldn't be able to be the ones to, to issue these cards. But, you know, of course, before, you know, we would expect, and it's written in, in these rules, that of course, and in the law, that if they do choose to proceed with that, with that arrangement, there has to be a really tight, a tight, you know, correspondence between GCC, for example, and ABC, so that as soon as they graduate, as soon as they pass individuals or fail individuals, then there's that immediate transfer of information between the two entities, to ensure that both know who was passed, who has a license and who didn't, how much was paid, and so on and so forth. And so, you know, the, and on the government side, the individual said, "Well, no, we should be the only ones to do it. ABC should be the ones." And the reason why we, we did this initially, Madam Speaker, is that we wanted to be easier for the end user, which is the actual employee. You know, you go to, to Rev and Tax to apply, and then you're scheduled to go into one of these, these classroom trainings. And so, what, what we're trying to avoid here, Madam Speaker, for, for now, is once you go and do that training at GCC, UOG, or GHRA, for example, now, you don't have to go back to Tizen and line up again there and then wait for your card, wait for the information to be transferred over and for them to issue your card and pay your fee. You know, the whole idea was, is that you take the courses at GCC or UOG, you pay your $60, you have your card, and you can work that day, or to work the next day immediately. And so, that was where we had that delegation of authority in the previous, in the previous law, which is, which is an option if they wish to proceed in that direction. And so, what, what this strike through does now, Madam Speaker, is, is takes away the alcohol server selling training program to be able to issue licenses and just keep it with Department of Rev and Tax. You know, I, I see, you know, I see both sides, right? So, you know, I would like to propose, Madam Speaker, is that instead of striking it through, we, we, we just, we keep it on, we keep on the alcohol server selling training program and just, and just add "or" the Department of Rev and Taxation, so that it's consistent with the law. Because we know when there is any conflict between the rule or regulation and the law, law will prevail. And so, we want to ensure that, to be consistent with the law, that we just take out the strike through on this on line seven and line 11, and just include an "or," so that it's either the program or the Department of Rev and Taxation shall issue alcohol employee license. So that's my amendment. On page 16?
Page 16, which is the exhibit, I mean, the actual rules and regs on line seven and 11, where alcohol server seller training program is deleted and left to the Department of Rev and Taxation, who shall issue. On the amendment, Senator Siniklas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to provide some perspective on, on the amendment, the original language in the bill as introduced was to have the alcohol server and seller training program be the one to issue the license. And it was during our roundtable discussion with the stakeholders from the Department of Rev and Taxation that it was determined that they wanted to retain the authority to issue the licensing. They wanted the program to be able to certify whether or not the individual completed, that completed the program satisfactorily, but they still wanted the licensing issue, the, the license issuing authority to be vested still with the Department of Rev and Taxation. And, you know, there's, there's pros and cons to, to either scenario. I'm going with the alcohol server seller training program theoretically may spare the individual from having to go down and line up at Rev and Tax, but I really don't see how it really would reduce a wait time, because technically, wouldn't the program still need to go and print and produce the license and, and, and develop it and give it to the individual? And I doubt that the testing center would also be the licensing production center. And so, would they need to go someplace else to go and get that license? Or how would you go about doing that? I've never taken an examination and had a license issued by the examiner. As a, an investment advisor, for example, I had to take multiple exams, the Series 7, the Series 66, in order to be able to get licensed as an investment advisor. And after I take those exams, they print out my scores, I'm able to go down to Rev and Tax and apply for my investment advisor license. They review everything, and then they go ahead and they issue me the license after that. By, by allowing this amendment to take place, we're basically saying that either the, the program or the agency can issue the license. And I'm, I'm just not too comfortable with that, because for one thing, to have two different entities potentially issuing out the same license, just opens the door for more abuse of the system. The second thing is, if we were to just have the alcohol server and seller training program issue the license, how does that have the force of the regulatory authority of the government of Guam attached to it? So for example, let's say somebody takes the program, gets their license from the program, and then they violate something in the course of doing their, their service, who revokes the license? Would the program then come back in and revoke the license? Would it, would it adjudicate complaints from businesses or from patrons saying, "Oh, this server did this or did that wrong, and you need to take away that person's license"? The program does not have the, or I wouldn't expect the program to have the necessary backroom infrastructure to be able to adjudicate complaints and have a system in place to actually revoke licenses. And that's why we have the government agency as the licensing authority. Because ultimately, someone can go to the ABC Board and file a complaint against so-and-so that they weren't following their proper procedures, and then the license can thereafter be revoked, using whatever adjudication procedures they have in place. And that's for me, the biggest overarching concern here is, granted, there may be more convenience by the program issuing the license, but what authority do we have to even regulate that license, to revoke that license? And if it was issued by the program, do we, do we need to spell out that the, the agency is still going to be responsible for adjudicating that license? And would they even have the authority to, because technically, they weren't the ones who issued it? Those are our questions that linger in my mind. And so, for simplicity's sake, what the committee did was say, "You know what? Let's just stick with the system that we currently have. The Department of Rev and Taxation will issue the license right now." And if we can come up with a, a more elaborate explanation as to how these things can be handled, then, you know, I'm all for that, too. You know, convenience is always a good thing. I'm not necessarily convinced that there's a, an overarching and debilitating inconvenience at this time, especially given the other, the other concerns that we need to consider with respect to who has the licensing authority and the adjudicating authority on those licenses. So, I guess with that, I'll object to the amendment, and then let the discussion go either way and see how the votes play out with respect to how, how the amendment turns out. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Is there anyone who would like to speak on the, on the amendment, which is on page 16, line seven and 11? To, the amendment was to, Senator, I want to make sure that please, that's to reinstate the alcohol server seller training program?
And to include the word "or."
And add the word "or."
Yes, because, Madam Speaker, as, as I mentioned earlier, the delegation of authority is an option, is an option that we gave to the ABC Board. If they wish to enter into an agreement with the university nonprofit organization, that they would be able to issue the licenses. And there's this, this concern about whether because GCC issues a license, they're going to regulate it. Of course not, Madam Speaker. The regulatory agency is ABC. They're, you know, they would be the ones to, to regulate and to adjudicate if there's any complaints that, that come in from that license. It's just a delegation of authority, and which, we all have a copy of the amendment that we just passed. This is the actual language in, in the law, public law 32-51. And so, you know, in that development of a memorandum of understanding, these were all these details would then be, you know, would then be vetted by both, of course, the ABC as a regulatory agency and the, the program, whichever program is approved to conduct this. So, Madam Speaker, the amendment is just simply to reinstate the alcohol server seller trading program, which would make it consistent with the existing law, and, and also to add "or," because if the department, if ABC says, "You know what? We're not going to, we're not going to deal with having a nonprofit or GCC issue the licenses. We want to do everything ourselves," then fine. All we're saying here is we want to make it consistent with, with what the law is.
And there is an objection to the amendment. Is there anybody else? Frank Blas, I have here, is, he recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Speaker, I share the same concern as a good senator from, Mike did it right, not a fool for now. But I also recognize, you know, the, you know, the intent with the mover of the amendment and the author. And I, maybe I'd like to make a suggestion, because I think the whole concern here is basically, who has the authority ultimately to issue, and then who has the authority to revoke, if necessary, suspend? And that repository, that individual, that, that one entity that's responsible for all of this. So, you know, maybe as a suggestion I could bring that, maybe it should read... So, you know, maybe as a suggestion I could bring that maybe it should read the Department of Revenue Taxation or its designee. And I bring this suggestion so that recognizing the designee could be that trading program. But I don't want to lose the fact, too, as well, that the Department of Revenue Taxation has that ultimate responsibility and the authority to do this. You can delegate authority, but you can't delegate responsibility. And so I offer that suggestion in lieu of some of the contradictions that may exist with regards to the amendment. So I don't know how we will be able to... Right, or its designee. It serves the same purpose, but it just, it shows that Revenue and Tax has designated that responsibility or that authority to be able to do this, but not the responsibility. I understand, and I just bring that up.
You're right. Okay, I mean, you're right. So we need to take care of this amendment first if we're going to entertain that amendment. And of course, there is, you know, an objection. So, Senator, you want to close?
Yes, or if I can, you know, what I can do is just withdraw my motion and then we can, because it does the same thing, and I think it's...
So let's take care of that. So a motion then is to withdraw the original amendment, no objections, so ordered. And then, yes, Senator, you still recognize? So, okay, so you're going to do it, Senator?
I can yield to the author.
Okay, so to you then, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to our good colleague. Madam Speaker, so based on that, we can have it read, I'd like to move that it read, the Department of Revenue Taxation or its designee shall issue, and so on and so forth. And that goes for line seven and line 11.
Okay, so on the amendment, on the amendment to add instead the Department of Revenue or its designee for both lines at seven and 11. Anyone want to talk about it? No? Okay, Senator Espoada.
Yeah, I mean, there's not much to belabor on this one. I think that was a good suggestion by this good senator from Baragota. And again, it was in line with the rationale and the reasoning by the author of the legislation in terms of being consistent. The existing law does say that the issuance of a Guam Alcohol Beverage Control alcohol employee's license on behalf of the board. And so this is probably more appropriate, the wording now on this amendment to rectify that situation, it's probably more amendments, so I stand in full support. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. So, anybody else who would like to speak? There being none, no objections, so ordered. Senator, you still have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the other amendment I'd like to make is on page seventeen. This is also another amendment that was included by the committee, and it says that trainers who have served for at least three years shall be exempted from the training and education requirements of section two-one-one-zero of this chapter, which is the requirements of what it takes to be able to obtain a license. And so I don't recall, you know, the rationale behind this during the roundtable discussions. And so I, you know, for me, for one, you know, I believe that, you know, even now that the licenses, now when we obtain licenses, if you want to serve alcohol, there's no training program, you don't get schooled on what the laws of the ABC are, of Guam are. All you do is submit whatever documents is required, and you get the card, it's good for one year, and you can only use it at that one establishment. With this initiative, it is a card that's portable, you can use it if you work at TGI Fridays, you can use it at the Hard Rock Cafe, at Chili's, or any other establishment that sells, and it's good for three years. And so after that three years, then you're required again to get, to go through another training program, like a refresher course. And so my reading of this is that it now would remove that requirement if you've been a trainer for at least three years. And so I don't necessarily agree with you, Madam Speaker, and so I move to strike this section in its entirety.
So the amendment that is proffered is on page seventeen on two-one-one-one, the exemptions is to delete that in its entirety. Senators Siniklas, you're recognized on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I don't necessarily have any objection to the amendment, but I do want to provide the body with the backstory of why the committee added it. This was as a suggestion from the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association representative because they stated that they've already invested a lot of time, energy, and effort into getting their seasoned veteran trainers and servers the necessary training to be able to comply with the laws as they currently do. And the logic was perhaps they should be grandfathered in and not require these people who have, they've already invested the training resources to have to go through a whole new training program all over again. But if it's the will of the author to remove this section in spite of the request from the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association representative that we included, the committee would have no objections, only because it would create a more rigorous training requirement for the existing establishments. But I do acknowledge the rationale behind the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association and their suggestion because if they did, in fact, invest in the training of their existing veteran staff, and if we have gotten to this point without any real major issues arising with them at the helm, then it stands to reason that grandfathering them in would not be to the detriment of the community. But at this time, the committee will yield to the author if that is his intent. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Espoada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I understand what the intent of the author is to try to remove this. However, however, Madam Speaker, as I go around to island restaurants and island establishments that serve alcohol, there are many people in there, there are many bartenders in there that I actually worked with back in the late seventies and eighties who are still in that capacity. They know their job. This exemption is trainers who have served for at least three years shall be exempt from the training and education requirements. Oh, I'm sorry, this is for trainers, not for servers?
Trainers.
Okay, right now...
Who have served for at least three years shall be exempted from the training and education requirements.
Well, if you're a trainer, if you've been through this process for at least three years, and I would imagine, and in fact, I know several who have been in this for more than ten years, in fact, even more than twenty years, they know what the requirements of the law are. We have, in many instances, grandfathered in various entities within the community for various laws and various reasons, only because they're there, they have been established, and they know what they've been doing. And so, you know, I understand the concerns that was brought up by the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association. There has been money spent on them already, they kind of know this already. I then would have to stand up for these men and women who have been there for more than three years, or three years or more. And like I said, I know some who've been in those positions ten, twenty years, right? And to call on the question their ability after all this, and we're running some very good establishments and some very good hotels, and many of them have actually gone from one hotel to another and have participated in that, I say we just allow them to be grandfathered in. And going forward, all the newcomers, I say, you know, definitely have to go through this. So, again, with no disrespect to the author, I object.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on the amendment? There is an objection. So, Senator, yes, to close?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I think there's a disconnect here because if we're talking about the servers and sellers that have been there for ten, twenty, thirty years, we're not talking about that in this amendment here. This amendment is saying trainers who have served for at least three years shall be exempted. This server seller training has, even on a voluntary basis, only been around for a few years. The Department of, or the Guam Behavioral Health and Lawness Center has engaged in this responsible beverage server training program on a voluntary basis, I think, just the past two or three years. And I think, just the discussions that we've heard from our previous, from the previous speakers, I think what they're talking about, Madam Speaker, is the actual server or seller who have been, who have gone through, let's say, the RBS program with Guam Behavioral Health and Lawness, or those who have gone through a program with the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association, which I do recall, which was brought up during the roundtable. But this amendment does not address that. And so perhaps maybe if, in another amendment, you know, that's something that could be included. But this one here says the trainers who have served for at least three years shall be exempted from the training. I just, it doesn't address what was just discussed. And so maybe if we take a few minutes recess to...
Yes, I agree. We're going to take a brief recess. The legislature's back in session. Senator Espoada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I appreciate this little bit of time off to be able to speak with the author of this legislation and the mover of the amendment. And after understanding his position, I would now like to withdraw my objection to his amendment.
Okay. On the motion then to withdraw, no objection, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. Senator Rodriguez, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you again to our colleagues for the discussions we've had. And so, Madam Speaker, I don't have... And so, Madam Speaker, I don't have any other amendments, and just ask again our colleagues to, to please support this legislation so that we can move forward with this program. And, yes, that's about it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. So on the motion to send 9-33, I'm sorry. Hi, Dave. Okay, so I'm being corrected here by our clerk that even though there were no objections to the deletion, we have to take the vote, so therefore are there any objections, because that will mean the vote, that there's none. No objection. Thank you very much. That means it's unanimous. Okay. Thank you. So on the motion to send 9-33, C O R to third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. All right, we've finished the first tier. On the second tier, Senator Rodriguez, number 48-33. Okay, set aside, okay. No problem. Bill number 50-33, Senator Respechel. Saved?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 50-33 as amended by the Committee on Appropriations and Judication into the third reading file.
And it's as introduced?
As amended by the committee.
As amended. Okay, yes, as amended. Yes, Senator, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this bill was presented to us specifically to our Oversight Chair, Senator Augen, who has oversight over the judiciary, and I was fortunate enough to be the sponsor of this bill, that it passed, would provide for the same extensions that are given to the executive branch for these licensed healthcare professionals, so that it would give, or ancillary service personnel employed by the judiciary, so it would give the judiciary of Guam the tools that it needs in order to not only retain the current level of services that they are offering to the community, but also as a, as a bridge, so that they can start preparing for these positions in the event that these individuals retire. Because if they retire right now, Madam Speaker, they wouldn't be able to continue even in a contractual capacity if they cannot suspend their annuity. And so this provision basically is consistent with what this body and this government has done over the years. Specifically, if you look at the provision we're amending on subsection A of 8121 of Chapter 8, saying suspension of annuity payments, we're going in and adding the judiciary of Guam, along with all the other positions that are afforded to the Guam Memorial Hospital, the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, the academic faculty positions at UOG and GCC, a limited-term police officer employed by the Guam Police Department. And so this list is pretty specific with respect to what exemptions can be given. And the Chief Justice Torres, as well as the Administrator of the Courts, they've reached out to the Chairman of the Retirement Fund, that doesn't have any objections to this bill simply because it's providing for a specific exemption. And so before I close, I want to make an amendment that we add Senator Frank Augen as the second co-sponsor.
So on the motion to add Senator Augen, no objections, so ordered.
And also I want to thank the Appropriations Chairman for holding a hearing and reporting the bill out.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, does anyone who would like to speak on the main motion? Senator Frank Augen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Just very briefly, I want to commend the sponsors certainly for taking the initiative and pushing this through and sponsoring this legislation. And I think sufficient explanation has already been provided in terms of what the impact would be and how it would assist the judiciary of Guam, the third co-ecu branch of government in terms of carrying out their operations. So I stand in full support of this, and I thank the sponsor for pushing it through. Thank you.
On the motion, does anybody else who would like to speak on the motion? There being none. Senator, do you want to close, or do you want me to send it down? I guess I'll send it down. Bill number 50-33, the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator Munia Barnes, and Bill 55-33.
Maasie, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that Bill number 55-33 C O R as substituted by the author. We move to the third reading if I can speak to it.
You may proceed.
Madam Speaker, this Bill 55-33 C O R is an act to approve the lease between the government of Guam and the Palauan Community Association of Guam. I want to share with our August body that the United States Air Force had jurisdiction control over certain pieces of real property commonly referred to as the Harmon Cliff Line. As such, the, you, United States Air Force had authorized and permitted nonprofit organizations to utilize certain areas of this property. I want to note that in response to working and giving the people back the, based on Guam Excess Lands Act, there was a requirement for the relocation to these nonprofit organizations. And with that, there was an executive order that was done in 98-13 that was issued for the orderly and expeditious transfers to the nonprofit organizations located in Harmon Cliff Line to the government of Guam property under a formal lease. And in this lease, it mandated that, that the Harmon Cliff Line property to the government of Guam under the formal lease agreement, that the selected transfer was identified and designated as cultural centers in Dedido to these nonprofit organizations that were previously in the Guam, in the Harmon Cliff Line. Our laws specifically state that if we're dealing with any land issues and land transfers and land utilizations, that it has to come back to this August body. I want to share with you, Madam Speaker, that the Palauan community of Guam has complied with all the rules and regulations governing the leased government-owned property pursuant to the Public Law 25-47, and that the Department of Land Management has vetted this process and has transmitted the documentation to the Guam Legislature, and this is where we are at today, that we ask for the approval of the lease and give the Palauan Community Association the authorization to have this agreement with Department of Land Management. I also want to say that Section 3 of the bill was added to waive the two appraisal, two appraisals needed for any of the land or leasing, as this, as this process had gone through the Department of Land Management and with all the necessary parties, based on the commitment by the government of Guam, working closely with the U.S. government when the transfers were done, and making sure that these nonprofits are not, were, that they were, that they will continue to be able to use these properties as committed. I ask that our colleagues support this effort. The Palauan, the community of Guam has been very active in our community. They, they utilize this area in support of cultural activities. They open, they have a commitment with the community to utilize the place, but more importantly, the, the consideration that the, that the, the cultural lease has been attached, as an attachment to this, to this bill, so that we can, so that I can ask my colleagues to help me support this effort, as they've been vetted through the process of going through land management and then coming to us for the use of the property. So thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Ada, Tom, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to rise in support of the bill. In the past couple of weeks, I actually had an opportunity to drive up to that area there, and this area that we're talking about is right up there in Dedido, adjacent to the Summer Homes subdivision that we were just talking about earlier. And quite frankly, I think what the Palauan community has done up there has been quite impressive. They've built the abbey very nice and colorful. They've certainly got their kitchen area to the side. The place has been cleared, and, and for sure, that community has, you know, has set out an objective to build their own cultural center, and they certainly are, are well along the way. And it's very impressive, and, and certainly we should approve, of course, this, this lease. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator Siniklis, on the motion?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I too rise in support of the bill. I've been up to the area as well multiple times. The abbey is a very nice structure. For me, what really attracts me to the work of the Palauan community is that they're adding value to the area, not only by building structures that are very appealing, but putting them to very, very good use. There are multiple times where I've been there and they had different cultural shows that they put on for the guests that were present. It was like a great big Palauan fiesta whenever I went up there. And I really think actually that the Guam Visitors Bureau should do a better job of coordinating with our Palauan community, because what they showcase up there when they have these events is something that I think would even be very attractive to our, our visitors from outside of the island, to come and see this little element of another culture that does call Guam home. I think it's one of the ways that we can continue to diversify our tourism industry, Madam Speaker, albeit an indirect way, is for us to be approving these kind of leases that would allow for the different cultures on our island, and in a nonprofit status, to be able to develop their own cultural centers, to be able to incubate and further practice their culture, and to be able to share it with the people who call Guam home also. That way, all of us can not only get exposed to it and they can practice it, but it can actually be a boost to our economy and another attraction for our number-one industry. So I would really like to commend the author for moving this legislation forward, and I'd like to commend the Palauan community as well for taking what we give them and putting it to very, very good use. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the motion? There being none, so on the motion then to send 55-33 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator Morrison, 73-33.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill number 73-33 as amended by the Committee on Guam, U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary. I'd like to speak on it, Madam Speaker.
So as amended?
As amended.
Okay. You may proceed, Senator.
Madam Speaker, Bill 73 is an act to add a new section, subsection 12314, to Article 3, Chapter 12, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated Relative to Strengthening Public Safety Efforts Through the Integration of Video Security Cameras Within Guam's Emergency Reporting System. I also want to wish to thank the Chairman, Senator Frank Augen Jr., and working closely with him and his office, his team, to strengthen this bill. I also want to thank Senator Frank Blas Jr. for his contribution to, to Bill 73, also as being Guam's homeland, one of, I believe, Guam's homeland's first advisors to, to that agency. Madam Speaker, through the efforts of working with our co-sponsors, we've, we strengthened this measure and made some of the amendments that addresses the following. Under the rules and regulations, Bill 73-33 would require G F D, the Guam Police Department, G P D, and the Office of Attorney General to develop the rules and regulations pursuant to the administrative adjudication law governing the use of video security cameras in public areas, which shall further guide the government of Guam's use of video security cameras within its emergency reporting system. With the protection against misuse and ineffective use, the measure, if amended, would require the rules and regulations to provide guidelines, S O Ps, and other procedures that may be necessary to protect personal privacy rights, and against the misuse or ineffective use of video security cameras and any footage recorded by such devices. In the registration and compatibility, Bill 73-73 would require all government of Guam agencies, entities, and organizations that intend to use video security cameras in public areas as part of their public safety efforts to register their cameras with the, with the G F D and G P D. These agencies must ensure that all video security cameras are compatible with Guam's emergency reporting system, and that the use of such devices is in accordance with the required rules and regulations. In facilitating the integration of video security cameras within Guam's emergency recording system, the G F D and G P D are urged to consider the availability of resources that may be available by other government of Guam entities, the United States military, the federal government of Guam, or the federal government, including funding support, training opportunities, and sharing of public safety and law enforcement resources, which shall be consistent with the required rules and regulations. Madam Speaker, I, I want to share some of the, some national examples that are, are good to share with not only the body, but our, our general public, so that they understand clearly what, what and how this tool has, has succeeded in reducing crime in their area. For example, in Chicago, cameras used, is used as a very effective tool to fight against gangs, guns, drugs, and also was able to, while narcotic-related calls declined by 76 percent, serious index crimes declined by 70 percent, while non-indexed or quality-of-life crimes declined by 46 percent. At the same time, narcotic-related arrests declined by 3.3 percent on beach where police observations devices or cameras were located, but also increased by 151 percent on the beach immediately surrounding the pot beach. So what that means is in the areas where they locate these cameras, of course, it forces these criminals to, to, to understand that they are being watched by law enforcement. In Sacramento, the technology helped the California Highway Patrol to recover 1,524 stolen vehicles statewide in 2014 that led to 194 arrests. Video recordings are becoming a key investigative tool that led to the arrests of the following shootings, robberies, and local retail stores in that area. Just local examples, Madam Speaker, I mean, for example, the DOC escapee, and could this escape have been addressed with the help of videos, cameras, and public areas? I've contacted the administrators up at DOC regarding this recent escapee. And Madam Speaker, the perimeter of that compound at DOC does... And Madam Speaker, the perimeter of that compound at DOC does not have one surveillance And right now, we have a thorough or an investigation ongoing and it will make it a lot easier, Madam Speaker. We had a surveillance camera out there monitoring every movement in that perimeter where we house one of the most dangerous criminals on our island. Out of all places, we don't have one surveillance camera in that area. The attack on the JFK student behind a grocery store in Harmon. We thank that pri- uh, the private sector or their company for, for their ability to luckily have a surveillance camera located in an area where it caught, um, and we're very fortunate that, uh, the student did not get harmed or hurt. She got a little hurt, but, uh, glad she was able to escape. But without that footage provided by, uh, by a private sector company, law enforcement authorities and the help of the public would not be able to locate that individual. The robbery that occurred in Assam Beach Park where the ro- the robber punched a female victim in the face. Apparently, unfortunately, there was no surveillance cameras, uh, but believed to date, uh, that person or that individual was still at large. Young Pogut Market robbery. I mean, we all saw how that surfaced and, and social media was used as a tool to get that recording, uh, out. And again, we thank, uh, that, um, mom-and-pop store for having this technology, uh, planted in, in their establishment and allowing for law enforcement authorities to get the help with the public. And gosh, that was one of the fastest, I think, turnarounds I've seen. The bank robbery in Geagle with the help of surveillance cameras that were, uh, you know, were able to, uh, apprehend those that are involved. Madam Speaker, we just had a break-in again with GW, uh, our high school, I mean, most recently, Simon Sanchez, uh, their school steals, I know, worked, uh, very hard with the Safe Schools Act to try to address surveillance systems in, in our schools. And just however, I believe, Madam Speaker, that, uh, that measure is, is more of a, a historical data that we are attempting to collect so that way, uh, it still allows for, um, criminals to still commit the crime. However, we'll, we'll catch them afterwards and then look at the footage and see how we can get the public's help to apprehend these individuals. So, what we're attempting to try to do here, Madam Speaker, is, is if we approach this, um, video surveillance system, uh, through an organizational approach, tying it to a central authority, which I believe that it should be, uh, tied to as a central authority where E911 system, at, at the end of day, that's where our people, our public, will be calling, uh, for assistance. Uh, and my con- my concern with what's happening out there is I, I, I hear certain agencies are trying to proceed with the procurement of video surveillance cameras and however, we just don't have a, a true organizational approach to how we should really use this system, um, how we could also look at assisting other areas such as Department of Parks and Recreation, uh, with, uh, with the shortest of lifeguards in the area where we can actually, with the technology today, we can cover more areas of the, of, of our waters to, to protect our tourists or our people that are out, out in the waters. And that technology is here today. So, we see it happening in front of us, Madam Speaker, uh, and, and my concern is that we see it working, it's, but we just, we, we just don't have this organizational approach to how we're going to move forward with this system. And, uh, I, 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 I believe that if, if E9, the E911 system with its, uh, ongoing upgrades or procurement of upgrading the system, um, we want sure that it has the compatible capabilities to integrate a, a, uh, video surveillance cameras, system. And many jurisdictions, I believe they're called the smart net system and that all ties into, again, our law enforcement authorities that have control over these surveillance cameras. Uh, Madam Speaker, we have to send a strong message that, that, you know, I, I know our private sector is investing in this, in this tool to protect themselves, protect their establishments, but the government of Guam has to take the lead when it comes to using this tool in our public areas as well. We're seeing, um, I want to use an example, when I was out visiting, uh, my sister in Maryland, there was a beautiful park that had brand-new equipment, brand-new park facilities. Nobody, she shared that there was nobody in that facility. It's just the surrounding area is ver- was very dangerous. The, the crime was pretty extensive. However, with the help of two, uh, implanted surveillance cameras that said in bold letters, loud letters, monitored by so-and-so's law enforcement authorities 24/7, almost overnight, Madam Speaker, we had children, they had children and families in that park system. So, again, that, you know, there was a peace, we saw a peace of mind in, in that community for, to putting their kids out there in the park system. Madam Speaker, before we proceed on to the main motion and open up for discussion, I, I would like to proffer an amendment, Madam Speaker. And this is on, uh, Section 1 of the bill, page 2, line 10. And it's hereby amended to read, "The Guam Fire Department," I'm sure, does everybody have coffee?
Uh, no, I don't have the, uh... Okay, does everyone have their copy? No? There's two. One with the Guam Fire Department and the other is the Guam Power Authority. Okay, so, can we proceed? Does everyone have their copy now? So, the first one, yes, Senator, uh...
Yes, uh, Madam Speaker. It's on Section 1 of the bill, page 2, line 10, as hereby amended to read, "The Guam Fire Department is authorized to expend a portion of the fund proceeds as provided in subsection 12305, 804 of this article to procure video security cameras as part of Guam's emergency reporting system. GFD may consider the bill lease transfer and/or similar finance, financing options in the procurement of video security cameras and pertinent equipment, supplies, installation, and maintenance of services." So, this, this new, um, uh, asserted language, Madam Speaker, the bill to lease, uh, transfer will provide for the option of GFT, GFD, uh, entering into public, a public-private partnership, um, that would allow for, um, these corporations or these IT corporations who, who are the experts in this area to, uh, to provide a system that, that would, based on size of Guam and of course, the mapping of Guam, how we can best cover Guam and, and assist the, the E911 system to better, uh, execute, uh, video surveillance or video security throughout Guam. I've met with, uh, different, uh, folks, Madam Speaker, and of course, we, we've talked about how could we cover Guam, uh, working with GFT and, uh, GPD, and, and this is some of the, the language that we've actually were able to get input from. Um, as far as the portion of fund, Madam Speaker, I've met with the fire chief, uh, on several occasions, uh, who was very concerned, of course, of the use of the fund, as noted in the public hearing. However, this was the language that he felt was necessary to work with. Now, when we say portion of fund, it's, it's, and are authorized to use a portion of fund, again, that gives the, the, the fire chief that, that, that flexibility without impacting the overall operations or his ongoing efforts to, to upgrade the system. So, um, that's, that's really, really what, uh, what transpired out of our discussions. And again, we met on several occasions to come up with that language. This, this new language, again, is to allow for the option of, to a bill lease, uh, transfer. So, they have this option as well to, to engage in, uh, a public-private partnership that along with the upgrading or the ongoing procurement of the enhanced 911 system, that they can also have this, uh, the potential to enter into a, a partnership that can, uh, allow for these experts in this, this field to determine how best we can, uh, build this for the people of Guam and securing our island. So, that's the First Amendment, Madam Speaker.
Senator, before, uh, I call for any discussion on it, um, and we're looking, of course, at the amended version and the page, of course, Section 1, we understand, but you said page 2, lines 10, but we're looking at instead line 6, starting with the Guam Fire Department. And all that language is the same up to reporting system. Then, of course, you have moreover, and then, but you have something different, GFD underscored twice. So, I'm wondering, is that going to go in before moreover? Is that the intention? And then you continue with moreover, GFD and Guam Police Department shall? Or is it for the whole thing? I'm not, see, that, that needs, I need that to be clear.
Can I take one minute recess, Madam Speaker?
Okay, we'll take a brief recess. The legislature's back in session, Senator.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Uh, it's just a second sentence only, Madam Speaker, you can see the double line, uh, there, that's just a second, 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 second sentence that we're, we're, uh...
Okay, so that's the new language that you want to add in, then?
Yes.
After line 10, after system.
That's correct, Madam Speaker.
Okay, because you, all right. So, the new language then, got to make that clear for everybody, is that, um, page 2, right after system, not, uh, don't touch the other where it says moreover, is to add this new sentence, that GFD may consider a bill to lease transfer.
That's correct, Madam Speaker.
Okay, on the amendment, I have, I have your Senator Ada and then Senators Nicholas. Senator Ada, Tom Ada.
Uh, thank you, Madam Speaker. I, um, I'm really concerned about, I have, I have some concerns about this bill. Uh, it seems that we have found a, a new cash cow now, uh, to tap from. Uh, just earlier, uh, in this session, uh, we had, we were actually discussing a bill that was now looking at the same funding source, uh, to be able to fund the project, uh, that was being proposed in that bill. And now, here we are again, now we have, uh, something similar. But I, I have, I have a couple of concerns with this amendment and the bill as a whole. One is, um, while, while I certainly applaud the good intent of enhancing the security efforts of our community by integrating whatever, uh, security measures we have out there, I'm concerned that now, now we have Guam Fire Department being, um, uh, now just a, a lot more involved in the public security efforts as opposed to the public safety, providing, providing ambulance services, fire services, uh, to, to, to respond to those kind of emergencies. Now, we're looking at them getting into the business of now expending a portion of funds, um, to, to procure video security cameras. And, um, and so, you know, we, um, we're, we're, we're now diverting funds to something, something else and these 911 funds, and I'm kind of curious why, you know, we vaguely refer to it as the proceeds as provided in section 12304, which is the E911 funds. And those funds were created about 16 years ago for the purpose of collecting, uh, funds from the telecommunications companies so that we can, uh, put in a, a, an updated 911 system that can respond to the emergencies. Um, and, and here, you know, 16 years later, GFD is finally just now in the process of updating that system. And they're not quite there yet. They finally got their, their bid proposals together and, um, and, but it's, but it hasn't been issued out, so, so we don't know how much that system is going to cost. Now, earlier, I had asked, I guess we're, um, in, in an earlier bill, they said how much money, they were, they were going to actually appropriate money from the excess collections. So, I asked, how much is that excess, uh, right now that's in there? And they said about one point plus million dollars. And then, now this one is really a little bit more subtle about tapping it because by authorizing, by then authorizing GFD to be able to expend a portion of the funds to go out and, and purchase cameras, uh, video security cameras, uh, that's just another drawdown of that fund. But, so, everybody says, but there's enough money in there, there's excess funds. So, I, I texted the, the chief of the fire department and I asked him the question, can you afford the new 911 system plus the additional funding that was being requested by another bill? And if this bill passes, now it'd be in addition to that and this one too? His response was, "At this point, I have to say no." And that was to the question of, can you afford the new 911 system plus all of these additional, uh, projects that is now to be funded by the E911? And his answer was, "At this point, I have to say no. Until we get this 911 system replacement into a final contract, I am reluctant to say yes." He doesn't even know what this new contract is going to cost. And I certainly would hate to see now the 911 system, the updating of that system, competing for now surveillance cameras, for the development and establishment of a special needs registry. Okay, what's next? Who's next? You know? So, we've opened up Pandora's box here. I mean, if this thing passes, we're going to open up Pandora's box and it's going to be a feeding frenzy. But I tell you, this is dangerous, we need to protect these funds, we need to update our 911 system. And our 911 system right now is so antiquated that if you had an emergency and you tried to text, you couldn't text your emergency. And I don't think we even have the capability for them to be able to find your location. That's how obsolete our system is. So, we've got to protect these funds, we've got to update that 911 system, and I guarantee you, what we're collecting now is not going to be sufficient. The $1 a month per line was established- The $1 a month per line was established 16 years ago. 16 years later, that $1, I don't know, can't, can't even get a loaf of bread with that nowadays. So, we better step back and take a look at what it is that we're raiding from. And I would have to stand in opposition to this bill, to this amendment, and to the bill. Thank you.
On the amendment, Senator Nicholas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I share some of the concerns of the retiring speaker. The center of my concern, Madam Speaker, with respect to the amendment, and as the amendment relates to the overall bill, is that, first of all, I don't see a dollar figure anywhere in the bill. And I'd like to pose that first as a question to the author, do we even know how much his proposed legislation is going to cost?
Senator Yeo to the question.
Yes, Madam Speaker. Again, if I could clear up some of the notions, I think it, it was possibly inappropriate to tie in another bill into this. The difference there, Madam Speaker, if I can answer that question, I'll get there. But I think we're mixing the fact that, the difference here, as I stated earlier, if anyone was listening, is that I met with the chief two, three times before introducing this bill. And that's the language we worked out so that he felt there was flexibility, that if I now have the authorization, I can still, I can proceed without impacting operations. He did agree, and, and that was the language. As far as the overall costs, even with the, the new upgraded E911 system, there was testimony provided by the chief that it will cost around roughly $300,000 to $600,000, that's what he meant, stated as far as a lease. So, even at that, we couldn't even engage using what it even costs for what they're doing now with integrating this video security cameras system. So, what we are trying to do here is saying, we want to have this ability to, or this duty to have this ability or authorization so that when we, when we have that flexibility, knowing that they are got their system in place, that the integration would have a consideration for tying it into the 911 system. Now, again, I make it very clear to, even for, even for the current 911 system, they can't even, as even the previous speaker mentioned, they don't even have an actual figure on that either. So, it wouldn't even make sense for me to even put an actual figure. I met with some organizations and experts in the industry, even at that, for them to even determine with the size, the landmass, and the areas to cover, the mapping, it will be hard, be kind of premature to even giving any type of estimates of what that will cost. What we're trying to do is saying, hey, we want to give the authorizations, or the authority to proceed in integrating this and giving that flexibility. So, I hope, I hope if, if, if we were there, I'm not sure if everyone was at that public hearing, you could sense that we, we, of course, it was hesitant with the fund and using it for this purpose. However, we understand that it is tying into the, it's compatible with the whole purpose of the emergency reporting system, and as we try to upgrade it with all the necessary tools for our law enforcement authorities, that integration of video surveillance cameras should be part of the specs anyways. So, that was part of the conversation as well. We wanted to just make sure as a, as a, as a policy that, ensure that they do integrate this system in place. But coming up, going back to answering the question again, is, it was hard to even gauge that, gauge that, that figure, even knowing that they didn't even know what the figure is with what they're procuring at this time.
Senator is able to respond to your question?
Just to clarify, if the author can just answer, yes or no, the answer is no, then, that we don't know how much this is going to cost? Is that the answer, no?
No. Of course, we wouldn't, we wouldn't know until we start with the procurement process. So, yes, I mean, we can pull in all the preliminary estimates, maybe from folks that maybe you could do something, maybe snapshots of the size of the island and use some other models out there, but we, of course, like anything, it starts with procurement and RFPing out and knowing, then we'll know what the true cost will be.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And that tying in of the amendment, it just, it just compounds my concern. There are different ways that we can go about actually costing this or even piloting it, maybe tiptoeing in it in a way where we're going to be able to gauge the capacity of our agencies to be able to, to utilize the system. But right now, the way the bill is written and with respect to the amendment, it says that it's, that the fire department is authorized to expend a portion, a portion of fund proceeds as provided in this article to procure video security cameras. Because the, the authorization to spend is open-ended and the amount is unknown, we're basically saying you can spend all of the amount to buy the security cameras. And as, as it relates to the amendment, the amendment takes it a step even further now, and it says that the fire department may consider build-lease transfer or other similar financing options in the procurement of video security cameras. So, not only are we saying you can spend as much as you want, and we don't know how much that is, but we're also saying you can go out and borrow too in case you need more money. Madam Speaker, if I remember correctly, when we had the conversation of procuring cameras for our schools, just for our schools, it was to the tune of $8 million. And we were able to get a firm figure on that, because we were able to go out and get testimony from service providers as to how much that would cost. And so, because we know that we're talking about $8 million just for schools, this bill is looking at, and particularly this amendment, is looking at creating the authority for the fire department to go out and finance an unlimited amount of money for an unlimited cost, and we already, for all of our public areas, all of them. You could, you could put a camera every 10 square, every 10 feet on every telephone pole if you wanted to of this bill. And I'm not going to get into the whole civil liberty conversation just yet, I just want to talk strictly about the costing and the rollout and what this amendment does now in terms of authorizing borrowing. Perhaps it's a good idea, and perhaps we can pilot it in certain ways, but for us to not know how much it costs, to authorize the expenditure of a fund that's supposed to be to upgrade our 911 system to a tune of perhaps millions of dollars, I can completely wipe it out, and then to layer that on top now of this amendment to authorize borrowing for that same purpose. Madam Speaker, I really think that this is one of those things that we need to take a step back from and, and reevaluate and perhaps revisit when we get a better handle on what the costing is, and maybe have an idea of perhaps piloting, piloting the program and helping everybody to include the agencies involved, have an understanding of what the true scope is of what this measure is going to entail. Never mind the fact, Madam Speaker, that, yeah, okay, we don't know how much it's going to cost, it might, it may eat up all of the fund, and we may borrow a whole ton of money to fund it, but then there's all these questions now also about sustainability of the whole program altogether. The author talked about how not even the prison has working cameras up there, and perhaps we need to put cameras up at the prison first before we go into other public areas. But even that, you know, cameras were installed up there, and now they're not working up there. What happened? How come they broke? What are the maintenance costs that are going to be associated with this? So, not only do we have the question of how much is this going to cost upfront, but how much is this going to cost on an ongoing basis? And if we're going to be considering financing options, are we talking about just financing the cost of buying one camera or 100 cameras? Or are we talking about the cost of financing the initial investment plus an ongoing, every fiscal year, financing cost that we're going to have to keep paying for these, for these cameras? All those questions, Madam Speaker, need to be answered. And I don't, I don't fault the intent of the author to try and create a safer environment, that's something that we all want. For me, the question becomes opportunity cost. And are these funds that we could be investing elsewhere? And with respect particularly to the amendment, should we really be borrowing money or authorizing the borrowing of money for something that we don't even know how, how much it's going to cost in its entirety? So, if Senator Adda did not object to the amendment, I'm going to have to on that basis, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
You're welcome. Senator, on the amendment, Senator Blas, you're recognized.
And I want to thank my colleagues for the discourse that we're having with regards to this amendment. And I'd like to be able to proffer a suggestion with regards to how we're looking at this. While we provide the authorization to expend a portion of the funds, and I recognize and I hear, and I, I am very cognizant of the conversations and the need to be able to, to maybe, to enhance and rebuild, if you will, the existing structure, system that we have, there's nothing in the amendment and there's nothing in the, in the bill in itself that basically says that we have to make all of these procurements, and these procurements have to be done within a time certain period. We're giving them the authorization. Now, I think, even if you look at the passing amendment and looking at the bill, I think what we're basically looking at is that the only, only time-sensitive, time-certain requirement is the establishment of the rules and regulations on being able to purchase and procure, and the type of systems, video, video surveillance systems that the government is going to be, are getting themselves into. But the actual procurement itself is not time-certain. Hence why I believe this, one is the reason why we can't, there was no, there was no fixed amount, there was no amount to put to this, because this, there has to be a study. There has to be a way to be able to figure, okay, what is it that we're going to need, and then what can we afford? And when can we do this? I mean, notice probably a lot of people that are here that prior to Typhoon Pon Son Hoa, we did have a video surveillance system that was in operation. It was a $600,000 system, but unfortunately, we lost because we didn't secure it properly during Pon Son Hoa. Prior to that system or, or, or right around that system being in, in operation, I remember sitting at a command center and being able to see all of Tuamont from one camera. I remember purchasing equipment when I was a Homeland Security advisor that allowed me to sit, sit up at Ganya Heights and be able to see what was going on at the streetlight in front of Micronesian, the Micronesian Mall without even moving. But what this provision does, what this whole thing does, is it provides us basically a means to make sure that if we're going to purchase equipment, if we're going to purchase video surveillance cameras, that one of the things that we want to do, first off, is put it into a central area of, you know, instead of everybody, all the government buying all these different types of cameras, because all the different agencies have got all different funding sources and all different grant programs, to be able to purchase these things. Instead of these, everybody going out individually doing this, that we put some uniformity to And that if there is going to be the procurement of these things, that this could be the funding Because it basically says it's authorized to expend a portion, doesn't tell us that you have to specifically use this. So, you know, and, and, and I understand and I appreciate the arguments and the concerns. But I don't see anything in this bill here or in this amendment here that basically says you have to do this time-certain. That before you purchase this, that you can purchase this before you, you figure out all the other priorities that you need to figure out, that you had, you address all the other issues that need to be addressed. Because you're right, Madam Speaker, you know, let me tell you what, it's great, we're going to have a multimillion-dollar system, but if we don't have a, a basic functioning reporting system, a mechanism to be able to communicate this, it's all for naught. And I agree with that. But please, let's not get wrapped around, and I suggest, and then I proffer that, let's not think that just because we're going to be able to do this, because we're going to authorize this, that this basically says it has to be done now. I'm going to trust in the management and the direction of the, of the fire department and its administration of the funds. I'm going to trust in that. But I'm also going to tell Chief Nicholas that, okay, we're giving you the authorization if you, okay, we're going to do the video surveillance cameras, first off, let's make sure that in order to integrate it, all the cameras that are probably going to exist within the government, it has to, it has to go past a certain muster, it has to meet a certain requirement. Because if we were to think about everybody who's going to, who needs to be responsible for this, it's emergency 911, it's E911. This falls right in line with what they need to do, or a part of the tools that they need to have. But again, Madam Speaker, I bring to the attention, and I see the concern, I understand the concern, but I want to proffer the suggestion, please. There's nothing here that says it's time-certain. We're providing the authorization. I'm not telling him he has to do this in 180 days. Thank you very much.
Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise also in objection and opposition to this amendment. What the, what the bill ought to be is in instruction to the various agencies that are listed here to, within 180 days, come back to this legislature with a plan on how to be able to do a video surveillance system for the entire island. If it is not time-sensitive, then this amendment need not include a provision for the authorization to expend funds. In, in previous legislatures, I was oversight for fire department. I voted against a couple of confirmations and almost didn't vote for the confirmation of this last, of Chief Nicholas, because of the fact that we couldn't keep track of what was happening in the 911 fund. There was money, then there was no money, there was money, then there was no money. 16 years, we've been trying to raise money to, to replace the 911 system. Six years ago, I attended a conference up at the top of the reef with all kinds of people from the electronic, or, I mean, the telecommunications industry who were supposed to try to put this together. It still hasn't happened. We've got to do things one at a time. Let's get the E911 system up. Once it's up and we funded it and it's, we have the maintenance for it, then let's look to do this one. But right now, to continue to be taking money from a, from a fund that is probably not even sufficient to underwrite the RFP that is going to go out for the E911 system is I'm glad the previous, the last speaker mentioned how much it costs to buy the surveillance system just for Tuamont Road, just for Tuamont Road, $600,000. That was 15 years ago. 15 years ago, one stretch of road of surveillance cameras cost $600,000. I don't have the ability of my good friend here to say how much, I mean, what the, what the dollar is in, in 2015.
Point of information, Madam Speaker, I know you, you rewired me about this yesterday, and I need to be, so, so that, just to be able to correct this. It was a $600,000 system, of which portion of that you can see Tuamont. I didn't talk about the rest of the areas, I didn't talk about the cameras that were up along the major highways either. It was a portion that you can see this. So, it was $600,000, but it was a portion of that system that I was able to see Tuamont. So it was $600,000, but it was a portion of that system that I was able to see Tumon. Just to provide that correction. Thank you very much.
For whatever was purchased 15 years ago for $600,000, I don't have the brain with, like my good friend from Dedito, to be able to say what it's worth in $2015. I mean, I would love to find out what that is. But whatever it is, it is nothing compared to what is being proposed in this bill. We've got to do studies. In this bill, a study is absolutely imperative as the first step. I too would love to see a surveillance system on this island. As Oversight Chair for GBB, I understood that they kept trying to find out enough money to be able to replace the system in Tumon. To replace that $600,000 system wherever it was that they were protecting the tourists. We've not been able to do it. We unfortunately realize that there are some cash cows, and we keep tapping it. In order to keep our tourists safe, we probably should have invested, rather than some of the other expenses that we've done with TAF. Maybe it should have been something that we included in the hot bond when we passed it. Because it's imperative to secure the safety. But I really do think that before we have any amendment that says authorized to expend a portion of any fund, we need to have a study to at least know how much we're talking about, and whether or not we can and should invest in it. If the cost is too prohibitive, then we shouldn't even, we might not want to do it. If the school system cost is $8 million, the appropriation in this bill is premature. I would support legislation having, directing all the agencies to come together and do a study on what kind of system is going to go in, what kinds of cameras to use, and how much it might cost. But to have an amendment like this one that says they're authorized to expend, I have to object. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, I mean, on the amendment, is there anybody else who would like to speak on the amendment? Senator, you want to close on your amendment?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, you know, not too long ago, Madam Speaker, we went down the same road, but specifically to our school system, and seeing how our school system was a major target for vandos, and obviously, we did something about that. I don't understand how that we're treating this different in a sense that we are really expanding that effort to covering areas where our people are being harmed. Well, we're just going to sit back and watch the private sector do the job of the government. Can we borrow your camera? I was just, on my way down, talk about hot bonds, we're spending millions of dollars. I'm not sure if you guys drove around and watched the investment we made being deteriorate overnight. Forget the hot bonds. They're being destroyed. Drive around and go look at the facilities that we're repairing. What are we doing to monitor them? Where's that investment? Well, we'll hope female mom-and-pop store sets up nearby and puts a camera in so we can borrow their help. Madam Speaker, we sat in a roundtable discussion, this evolved from a roundtable discussion with our mayors as well. They wanted more patrol officers in the streets. They were wondering why the Kate vehicles were being used elsewhere. We saw that discussion unfold. We kept talking about how much would it cost for more officers. The threshold was one officer per 1,000. It's 160,000, 170,000 people on this island. There's no way in heavens, at this time and point, that we're going to have an officer per 1,000 people. So I brought up the question, how we export technology to offset this issue. Doesn't beat, nothing can beat a warm body down the street, surveilling up and down the street. Well, we all know, the criminals are smarter than us. They wait for that officer to leave and do their thing. But Madam Speaker, we got to get to the point where we say, well, sir, I don't care if this officer's not in your street at this hour, but we're going to monitor you 24/7. Come out of your house, do what you got to do, we're going to catch you. When do we send that message? Again, I was so excited about these hot bond projects. And if you drive around, they're graffiti all over already. And what we're going to talk about is, we're probably going to introduce legislation again to stiffen the penalties. Oh, you got to catch the guy first. We haven't caught whoever that guy is that keeps doing that to these facilities. Well, let's stiffen the penalties. Let's allow our judges to do this and that. Well, let's work on the front end and catch these guys. Our private sector is doing it for us. While around us in our region, we're seeing, even in our Asian countries where crime is low, they ain't taking any slight chance, Madam Speaker, and they're investing in this tool. You've been to South Korea, you've been to, even the Philippines right now, even Singapore, every 40 feet, as the previous speaker said. Yes, we're covered every 50 feet. We just don't want to take a slight chance. We don't want anybody hurt. As a, we're trying to simply saying, GT's not going to spend any money they don't have. We want to set as leaders that this is where we want to go with this government, where we want to go with our facilities, this is where we want to go with our investments, this is where we want to go with our public properties, this is what we want to do, we want to protect them, we want to monitor them. And at the same time, protect our people, Madam Speaker. We're going to wait for a roundtable discussion with the mayors again? Well, I'm offering a solution that I believe, supported by data, that this tool works. It is compatible with E-911 systems across the United States, or the SmartNet system, which is similar to a 911 system. We're just saying add this if we have to, and it's in layman's terms, make this part of the specs. But I don't want to chance that. I want to make sure, as a policy, we're telling this agency that this has to be in there. This has to be a tool, as we know that works. I want to catch these people, Madam Speaker, as a government. Unless somebody has a plan to provide us one officer per 1,000 individuals, I want to see that plan. Because that was what was presented at that roundtable discussion, and I'm not sure if anybody has a plan for that. Madam Speaker, this also calls, as you read the bill as an entirety, calls for an implementation plan as well. So, they're all working hand in hand, they're not going to proceed without, and using money they don't have anyways. It's saying we're going to allow for this, given what's necessary in the plan, and where we can do it with the portion of the fund. I'm just tired of waiting for the private sector to help us. Thank God, that video camera was there when that little girl got smacked across the face. Thank God. Somebody, if I'm not, somebody has a resolution ready for that establishment, let's do it. Because we got that guy off the streets, and it was a camera that did it. I would love to know exactly how much this is going to cost. But the Fire Department can't even figure that out. That's why it calls for an implementation plan. And we'll come back and show that if, within the portion of the funds, can they expend this. If not, then we'll have to seek the additional resources, Madam Speaker, as a body, with the implementation plan. However, if they can do this in pilots, they have the ability, well, using the portion of the fund without impacting the E-911 operations. Madam Speaker, I was also clear that the chief actually made it clear that I'm not sure what statement was texted to my colleague, but apparently, there's a miscommunication because the chief actually is clearing that whole issue up. And maybe we read this in a context that was, I'm not going to say misleading, but I think my colleague was referring to another bill that I understand clearly that the 911 fund, E-911 fund was tied into. However, the difference I was stating here is, we sat down with the stakeholders to ensure that this is the language we can work with. Madam Speaker, this island, again, can be covered and surveilled. There's, when I showed the numbers in cities and areas where they adopted this system, and seeing crime, I'm actually just looking for at least a 20% reduction in crime. We're seeing above 50% drop in criminal activity. Let's face it, Madam Speaker, the freaks come out at night, and it's going to happen tonight. There's going to be more, more, and more of this happening. When do we start? I was hoping that with the school system, that we will be able to also, as written here, integrate this also, what we've done with the school system is to integrate this into the E-911 system, because at the end of the day, Madam Speaker, who do we have to call after we get that data? The 911 operators, the emergency responders. I think that's what we should have did firsthand with the Safe School Act, a surveillance system. Because I believe that's just really historical data. What we're trying to do is have an intervention plan as well, that we want to catch these guys, these criminals, before they do anything. There's different types of video surveillance systems out there, but the systems today can intervene, Madam Speaker. What we're doing with the school system is a great idea, but we don't have the organizational approach to all of this. How do we respond? And lately, even if you have a camera there, they still can do the job of vandalism, and then we catch them afterwards. Madam Speaker, I know there's an objection to this amendment, and I want to make it very clear, I said, that the Fire Chief provided and ensured that this language is good, that they can work with. And I'm not, I'm not like, this is not apples and oranges. I really feel that the E-911 system, and everything it's going to do to upgrade, to address the ADA compliance of addressing our disabilities, Madam Speaker, we got to expand this also using this tool, for even that service as well, for those that are, have disabilities. So, I asked my colleagues, Madam Speaker, to support this amendment, and allow this flexibility to, for our Fire system, or our E-911 system, or to start somewhere. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The amendment is, please read that, is that if the GFD may consider bill lease, transfer, and/or similar financing options, that's the amendment to the bill, and there are objections. So I'm going to call for the vote. So in favor, please raise your hand, in favor of the amendment. Yes, because that's your amendment. You're right, because I'm calling, yes, I'm calling for your amendment. There's an objection, so yes, those in favor of the amendment. Please raise your hand. Amendment failed. Senator, you still have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I would like to also move to address another amendment on Section 1 of the bill, page 2, line 17. And to add, line 17, here is amended to read Guam Power Authority, the Office of Technology, and the Guam Visitors Bureau.
So the new add-on here is the Office of Technology after the Power Authority?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
So the amendment is on page 2, line 17, after Guam Power Authority, is to add the Office of Technology. On the amendment, does anyone like to speak on the amendment? So, is there any objection to the amendment? No objections, so. Senators, you have the floor.
That's all I have, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On the amendment, I mean, the main motion, on 73-33, on the main emotion, a main motion now. There been none? One more time. On the main motion, yes, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, I stated earlier my position on the bill, that I I think the concept is good of integrating the various public safety, public security tools that we have out there, to be able to basically, you know, offset the need for a policeman at every corner. But it seems to me that the problem that at least I have is that while the objective of the bill is really good, I think that the means to achieve the objective really needs to be needs to be taken back to the drawing board and to be looked at. Because I'm concerned that the source of the funding is, at this point at least, is not sufficient to address the needs of the 911 system in addition to whatever other projects that are to be added to it. Now, probably more critically is the fact that there seems to be this confusion between integration versus procurement. We talk about, you know, basically using the 911 system as the integrator for all these, the information that is being collected by the surveillance cameras and whatever other surveillance devices that may be used out there. And I guess it seems, my understanding in reading the bill, is that it wants to be And I guess it seems, my understanding in reading the bill, is that it wants to be able to integrate all these technological, this technology that's gathering information. But instead, it makes a big difference when we say, but then you're authorized to also go out and procure cameras. It just, you know, and now the, you know, the statement is being made that we don't have to go out there and procure anything. All we're talking about is authorization for 911 funds to be used to go out and purchase cameras. And if that's the case, then maybe, and I don't purport to, you know, to be, to know how bills are crafted, but it seems that if that's what we, if that is the intent, then maybe what we need to do is go back into the legislation, such as Section 12304, which kinda outlines what the 911 Fund is authorized to be used for. And make the amendment, and they're saying that in addition to your 911 system, which is your telephone system that can do all the things that that system should be able to do, is that it can also, you know, purchase or make upgrades for purposes of integrating surveillance cameras or what. But it seems that that's where the effort should be made. Because in the existing law, it says that, yes, the funds are to be collected for certain purposes, but those funds cannot be expended unless it is appropriated by the legislature. You know, if the author is willing to consider that, then maybe, then maybe that might be the compromise, is that to expand the authorization for what the funds can be used for, but that later down the road, if then, you know, somebody feels that we wanna expend $600,000 to go and buy surveillance cameras, then the legislature is gonna have to look at that. And that I would be willing to compromise with and certainly consider, but to just give this outright, you're authorized to go out and spend it, you know, by creating a new section, I really have concerns with that. And so, I certainly, you know, rise in opposition to the bill. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator. On the main motion, Senator Siniklas, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'll just confirm of the author, and I do agree with a lot of what the retiring speaker has shared. I think that there's a lot of good provisions in the bill that we may want to consider allowing to move forward, such as the development of an implementation plan to use video security cameras in public areas, as well as integrating the existing camera infrastructure. I think those things are all good things that we should probably consider moving forward. For me, and as stated by the retiring speaker, the primary concern right now is authorizing the expenditure of the funding source, which is the E-911 Fund. This is basically a pre-authorization for them to spend. Again, we don't know how much this whole system is going to cost, but if we take that pre-authorization to spend out and we move everything else forward, we can then eventually get a hard figure as to how much that investment would cost, and that's something that we can debate at a later time. But in the meantime, I think it will be good for us to consider moving forward all of the other elements. And so, at this time, Madam Speaker, I'd like to propose an amendment on page 2, striking from line 5 to line 10, up to the word "moreover." So, we'll start with GFD, and I'll ask the legal counsel and the engrossment to just spell out Guam, the Guam Fire Department. And so, we'll strike line 5 to line 10, up to the word "moreover," to include the word "moreover." And what this amendment would do, Madam Speaker, is it would take out the pre-authorization to expend from the E-911 Fund. But everything else would remain intact. There's no other spending authorizations throughout the bill, and it would allow for an implementation plan to be developed. It would allow for integration to take place. It would secure the protection of personal privacy rights, and it would ensure resource sharing. So, I think that this is, I mean, it's 90% of what the author is intending to move forward here. Again, the main issue is the pre-authorization to expend an unlimited amount, which is basically taken, which is basically covered if we remove lines 5 through 10 up to the word "moreover." So, I'd like to proffer that as an amendment to strike, Madam Speaker.
There is an objection. So, is there anyone like to speak on the amendment? All in favor then of the amendment, which is on page 2, to delete the lines from 5 to 10 after system? So, in favor, please raise your hand. Failed to get the necessary votes to pass. Senator, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, absent that amendment, then again, we still have the underlying problem here. We have a bill that would authorize an unlimited amount to be spent, an unknown quantity to be spent, from a funding source that has a finite amount in it that's intended to upgrade our entire 911 system. It saddens me that we can't move everything else forward that is important, because we're gonna get hung up on the one part that really is very irresponsible. We cannot go out there, Madam Speaker, and authorize anybody to spend and give them a blank check. I mean, really, what we will effectively do by passing this bill now, leaving this section in here, is they can go out and they can procure a $100 million camera system, and then just come back to the government and say, well, you authorized it. And let me give us a case in point, Madam Speaker. There was language on the books, on the laws, that authorized for eventually a commitment of $200-plus million for a 50-year-old facility up there in Tejana. It was on the books, it was authorized years ago, and then they turned around and they signed a contract because it was pre-authorized by that existing statute. Never came back to this body. Never came back to this body. And then all of a sudden, when it happened, everyone started saying, whoa, wait a minute, why are we, why are we doing all this? But contracts were already signed. And that's why, Madam Speaker, we need to be more prudent when it comes to passing legislation that has these permanent and unchecked effects. Because now, if we pass this bill, someone can go out there and sign a contract to procure $100 million worth of cameras, and we're gonna have to honor that contract. Never mind if it makes any sense, never mind if we have the money for that investment. Never mind the opportunity cost, because, and I'll get into that in a second, there's so many other things that we could be spending this money on. Now, I understand that some people come up with an idea, and it becomes their baby, and they wanna move it forward, but we really need to step back and open up and look at the big picture here. And this spending authorization is just something that we cannot do responsibly unless that is really the intent. And then that would cause me to really step back. Are we trying to create an opportunity here for someone to get a contract that's perhaps gonna be the sweetest deal in the history of Guam? Because it's an unlimited spending authorization. Now, the rest of the bill isn't necessarily a bad thing, Madam Speaker. Absolutely, it'll be a good idea for us to go out there and come up with an implementation plan for security cameras. It'd be a great idea to come up with rules and regulations. It'd be great for us to ensure privacy rights, and it'd be great for us to ensure resource sharing. But we can't, now that this amendment's failed, I can't in good conscience vote for If that section was taken out, Madam Speaker, and we allowed everything else to carry forward, which was something I was comfortable with, we would get a firm number. We would get a firm number without having to commit to that amount upfront. And then the vendor would get to come back to us, and then we get competing offers. Somebody might say it'll cost $10 million, somebody will say it'll cost 20, maybe it'll cost $600,000. But when we pre-authorize the government to enter into agreement to spend, we don't get the best deal. We get the deal that somebody's able to work out. And ultimately, the people don't get the best bargain they could have gotten. And that undermines the whole intent of what I think this legislation's all about. It's about keeping the community safe. And as much as we wanna keep the community safe from crimes, we also gotta keep the community safe from rampant spending that's going to eat away at all the other opportunities that we need to take care of, all the other issues that we need to address. If we sign a $100 million contract now to go put cameras all over the island, it's $100 million bucks that we're not going to have for police officers, for schools, for the hospital, all because somebody was able to worm the right language into a bill, nobody wanted to take it out, and now we're going to have to honor it once the contract is So, at this point, Madam Speaker, because we are now dealing with the bill without removing that language, it comes to a point for me where I am now compelled to do everything I possibly can to ensure that it does not pass. Because as the Chair of the Committee on Finance, with my oath to serve the best interests of this territory and to uphold the laws of the island, and my commitment to the people to look out for their interests, there's no way that I can allow this bill to pass, and I'm gonna have to do everything I can now at this point to ensure that it doesn't. And the sad thing is, Madam Speaker, is that all the other elements in here are good. But there's no way we can give a blank check that can give out a sweetheart deal that can cost our people hundreds of millions of dollars because we just didn't close the I object to moving it down to third reading file, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, may we have a one-minute recess, please?
Okay, we're gonna take recess. The legislature's back in session. There is, on the motion then to, well, on the main motion, we're on the main motion, there are no other speakers, then like, I'm gonna ask the author then to close, and then we would act on the motion to send it down to third reading file. Senator, you can close. Unless there's anybody else who want to speak on the main motion. So, you can close.
So, Madam Speaker, correct me, we're sending this down for, the senator agreed with a 90% of it, but because...
No, no, no. Your motion at the very beginning is to send this bill to the third reading file. Everyone has spoken already on amendments and on the main motion, so I'm giving you now the opportunity to close on your original motion, and then, of course, I know that there will be an objection, and then I would have to call for the vote then to send it to the third reading file. That's the process. To the voting file, yes.
Okay. Oh, Madam Speaker, obviously, I feel personalities are taking away, information's being used, as stated with, I say with the chief, I just got a correction from the chief, that a statement that was made by one of our colleagues was specific to another bill. So, I stated earlier that was very inappropriate to be used to create a misconception of that bill, using that he does not agree, when he was focusing on another bill. And I have that all here too, so I want to put that in record, that that was a very inappropriate move to be using that information to, and stating that the Chief of Police, I mean, the Chief of Fire, basically changes mind after meeting with him twice. Madam Speaker, I, yes, there's opportunities here to still proceed forward with this bill. However, sometimes, you know, when we're focusing on certain amendments to incorporate here is to make the bill better. The amendment we proffered earlier, yes, failed. Now, we had a colleague here that was trying to go further and extract a certain section here that I believe is very important to the overall legislation. Because it gives that opportunity for, and it's not an open-ended, again, the way we use words here, gosh, it says a portion. Can I read it? It's just portion. It doesn't say unlimited. Let's not mislead our people. And that's just really unfair to what we're saying here publicly. I read the bill, and I hope they read the bill too. And when you're making statements, this is open-ended, they're gonna spend it like crazy. It's gonna be unlimited. Come on, use the words that are in the bill. It's important, Madam Speaker, that that section stays put, yes. I have compromised many times, actually compromised in almost every bill that I've put through this body. Yes, I accepted that one of the good amendments that I believe that will authorize for a bill lease transfer would also give a lot more opportunity to take this system of surveillance cameras to a whole new level. Yes, when we're talking about the big picture, this is really, Madam Speaker, the big picture. I believe that, Madam Speaker, from the public, or from a roundtable discussion to a public hearing, to now here on the floor, we've designed legislation that we can take the safety of our community serious. I hope one day I could go back to the days where I can put, where my mother could drop me at a basket court and just leave me there till 12:00 midnight. We can't do that today. I can't seem to drop my kids down there, I have to stay with them until they're done playing. It's the reality today, Madam Speaker. I was just over there at the police memorial services, talking to one of the families of our fallen police officers, and they said, sir, keep working hard, today is not the same. An older lady said, it's not the same. I cannot open my windows. A simple statement like that, Madam Speaker, is powerful. That's the world we live in today. Great efforts with the school system. I saw that as a phase in pilot project. And as we all do, I saw an effort to say, how could we expand this further, not just in the school system, park system, our government facilities? in the school system, the park system, our government facilities? And when we talk about giving our law enforcement tools, this is, if you read up in, this is the next best thing when it comes to surveillance or keeping our people safe, or bringing a peace of mind that law enforcement is out there regardless if you don't see them. Today, if you don't see them, they're not there. Because we know the shortage of manpower. So, we're going to send this bill to the third, I'm objecting not to send it, someone's objecting not to send it, because he doesn't agree with a certain section. But he agrees with 90%. So, I guess, as we all stated, there's no perfect bill, but I guess, in the terms he's using, because of this one section's in there, he wants to turn it back to the third reading file? So, we're going to not be moving in this direction, Madam Speaker, in a sense that we could... It's obvious, Madam Speaker, that it is, it's just a misunderstanding of the words that we used earlier. I really, really feel that was wrong. I'm trying to correct you. The Chief of Police made it clear they can work with this language. That will be the day, that will be the day that I ever do get up and use information to derail someone's efforts. And if anybody wants to, you can come visit me afterwards, and I'll show you exactly the text message that I have from the Chief of Fire. Complete misunderstanding of what he was asked. So, I just don't want my colleagues thinking because that's part of the equation, oh, he doesn't agree. Even me, I was kind of confused here, I didn't want to proceed unless, and that's why I fought to keep the language in there. That wasn't just my idea, that was idea by our stakeholders. So, I ask my colleagues, Madam Speaker, if we can continue the discussion, Madam Speaker, and help this to become a better bill.
Considering then that, as I look out to our colleagues, that there is a request, and it's 5:15 to recess until tomorrow morning at 9:00. So, a recess.